Elmwood Planning Commission Regular Meeting convened on Tuesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P. M. Please stand and join me in reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you. Carrie, would you please call a roll?
Chris McCaskey.
Here.
Beth Roberts.
Here.
That is six, two, respectful.
Here.
Jeff H. Up.
Here.
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 Thank you. We have enough members in attendance to constitute a quorum so we can proceed with the rest of our agenda. We are Item D, limited public comment only on the agenda items. If you wish to make a public comment, please come to the podium. We ask that you identify yourself and let us know if you're a resident of Elmwood or not, and proceed with your comment, and we're going to limit comments to three minutes. So I will open the first public comment period at seven oh one P. M. Seeing no one stepping forward, we will conclude the first public comment at seven oh one P. M. There, at the, near the end of our agenda, there is an opportunity for a second public comment period, and we do have a public hearing tonight, and within a public hearing, there's an opportunity for public comment. So we are on to Item E, Agenda Modifications and Approval.
I move approval of the agenda as written.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second. We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. The minutes of the October sixth, two thousand twenty-two Special Meeting Workshop.
I move approval of those minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the October sixth, two thousand twenty-two Special Meeting Workshop. Second. We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Now the minutes of the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two Regular Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about those minutes. I reviewed them through the Traverse area community media afterwards, and on the, what would be page three, at the very top of those minutes, it says staff cons, the majority thought a survey was necessary. I'm not sure it was that clear in the minutes that that was true, and I don't know how to deal with that kind of thing.
Minutes are a summary, so, I mean, it doesn't need to be verbatim.
No, it was not verbatim, but my, it seemed to me that there was consensus regarding data collection, review, and analysis, and an update, but it, my, my reading of what the, what was on the, the video, Nate had said, well, a couple of, a survey should could have a couple or three questions, and that was, that was what I got as being the survey, and I didn't, it didn't seem to me that the majority thought a survey was necessary, and I don't know how to deal with that kind of thing. Maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, I, I thought the majority of the commission did find that, you know, they did want some sort of public input, including a survey.
I'm willing to be wrong. I just don't.
I think by the end, I think we kind of got to that place, you know? I think maybe.
All right. I don't want to speak for you, but.
No, I've spoken up there.
Right.
I, yeah, I.
It's just a question.
I get your point, Doug.
I think, as Jonah pointed out, I think near the end, we wanted some additional data collection and probably some way of, whether it's a survey or whether it's something, another method of engaging the public with the master plan, because that's one of the things that we state that we do, so we need, and we, granted, we have a lot of, of public in attendance when we've had more interesting issues on our agenda. So I, I guess I'm, my, my conclusion was that we were going to look at the, and maybe this was just in my head, but we were going to look at sources that collect data, like Networks Northwest collecting regional data, we would look at U. S. Census data, and then we would, since we've got some time to start gathering this information, we would look at what other means or methods we would, we would use to engage the public and, and get more information with respect to the master plan. So I, I guess, you know, a survey is one, one way of doing that.
I, if I can make a comment, Doug's, Doug's begging me to go over there. I think surveys are good. I like, I like input. The tough thing is the general public may not even understand the master plan and what it is, and I think with that, you need to, if you're going to put out a survey on the master plan, you need to define what the master plan and what it does for the township.
Right, but, but to clarify, we're just reviewing the minutes, and I mean, again, I mean.
Well, and if we're going to do that, then maybe we just take a vote now and be done with it.
I mean, I'm happy to strike that sentence.
See, I don't, I don't, not sure I want it struck, but I guess if the consensus of the commission is that that was what was the intent of the commission at that time, and I think it might well have been, but I wasn't sure, I'll go, I, no, that, I'm fine with that, but as I said, what, what was, what seemed to me to be the emphasis and what the chairman had said was that data collection, review, and analysis, and an update, and that kind of, that kind of approach to it, so, I mean, it just puts me in, in a strange position, I guess. It's the minutes we're talking about, not the.
Right.
Yeah. If that is an accurate reflection of the minutes and the, and the consensus of the committee, of the commission is that that's what it is, that's fine.
It was my understanding after that meeting, I guess, yeah, I mean, we can review it, I mean.
Well.
Hold off on approval of the minutes?
We, we could either hold off on approval of the minutes for pending further clarification, or you could, or the other possibility would be approving, I don't know, if, if you can do this, if you can approve the minutes with that, no, I think probably just hold off until next month. Okay, so, we will hold off on reviewing and approval of the regular meeting of October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, pending additional clarification on the last sentence on page two oh four and the completion of that statement on the top of page three of four. Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Sarah prior to, motion to accept?
I think so. I make a motion to consent calendar as is.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
We have support. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent calendar is approved as presented, accepted as presented. Thank you. Item H, Declaration of Conflict of Interest. Commissioners, please review the remaining items on the agenda. If you have identified that you have a conflict with one or more of the items, please make that known now.
Rick, it's been, I just got to put it out there. I help maintain the roads in the Timberly area, so I know those roads well, and I don't know that it would be a conflict, but I think that it's important that everybody know that I help maintain those roads in the wintertime. Okay. I don't know if that's a conflict or not, but.
Well, there's just a, a small portion of the project that deals with roads, correct?
South Cottonwoods does extend into the project area, but you don't currently maintain that, you know, extension.
Correct.
So basically, you just, you stop the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So.
Nothing for the current owners or the past owners or whatever the project posted. I, I don't have any business dealings with anybody with the current, with this particular property.
Okay.
And I spoke to our attorneys on the matter, and neither of them seemed to think it was a conflict.
Okay.
But just that it should be disclosed.
Okay, well, thank you for disclosing. Anyone else with any concerns? Okay, we'll declare that a conflict does not exist, and we thank Commissioner April for identifying his work and relationship with the, the area up there. Old business, we have none moving into, excuse me, new business. J. A., we have a, a public hearing on the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is something that we must review every five years, and essentially, it's a, it's sort of a, a condensation of all of the projects where funds are spent on the properties and fixtures that belong to the township, so.
Just quick little clarification, it's actually every year.
Every year?
That's.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. I was thinking, yeah, every year. Thank you for the, catching me up on that. So, beginning at seven twelve P. M., this public hearing to receive public input on the following matter, the capital improvement plan for the charter township of Elmwood, in accordance with the official notices now open, the Elmwood Township Planning Commission would like to make it clear that it is bound by rules and laws and that these will be followed when weighing the case. In order to conduct the hearing within a reasonable time and to keep the subject at hand, you are asked to observe the following rules. The applicant will state their case fully and furnish the commission with pertinent information concerning the property. Township staff input, if any, will then be provided. Those wishing to speak for, against, or about the proposal will be heard. The public is encouraged to state their name and address if they are resident, property owners, or business owner, but are not required to do so in order to speak. Please refrain from repeating what has been said before, and please do not involve personalities. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes enforced by the vice chairperson or secretary in their absence. Be specific as possible. All statements or questions must be directed to the chairperson. Once the public hearing is concluded, the commission will undertake its deliberations and make a decision during the regular meeting. During its deliberations, commission members may ask questions of any person in attendance. Of course, you are not required to answer any question, but answering could be helpful to the commission. Any such questions and answers do not reopen public comment. The matter may be tabled or continued if more information is needed to make an informed decision. If the zoning ordinance allows the commission to make a decision, then the matter may be approved, denied, or approved with conditions. The decision may be delayed or postponed for cause as determined, as determined by commission members. Thank you. Our, our statement deals more, since we don't deal with the capital improvement plan but once a year, we, we, some of the language in here seems a little awkward with respect to our capital improvement plan since it's not really a, a property, but with that being said, are there any questions regarding the capital improvement plan before I open public
Okay. I will open public comment at seven fifteen, specific to the Charter Township of Elmwood Capital Improvement Plan, two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-nine. If you wish to make a comment, please come to the podium and identify yourself and make If there's no one wishing to make a public comment pursuant to the Charter Township of Elmwood Capital Improvement Plan, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand, two thousand twenty-nine, we'll close the public hearing at seven sixteen P. M., and we'll, then we'll begin our deliberations at the commission level. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Sarah regarding the plan?
Sarah, this is, you've reviewed this a couple times already.
It came for, you know, essentially introduction. You reviewed it.
Correct.
I mean, like, on the page one of one, you know, the introduction, you know, I just kind of liked to outline, you know, the process of the C. A. So, yeah, the text has not changed since you last reviewed it, it's just you're required to hold a public hearing.
Yep.
If you are all right with the plan, you would recommend approval to the township board, who's the other ones who ultimately adopt it.
Mr. Chairman. I just have a housekeeping comment. On page seven, the third, the second column, the third item, I think there are three zeros missing by the five million.
Comma in the.
Yep.
They were all seen to be out of order, right? Or not, not there.
Or something's really cheap.
It's Harris Human. Thank you for that catch.
It's a new number.
So basically, the, the correction that we're making is we're adding, okay, we're not adding three zeros, we're just adding what? A comma and two zeros. So it's five million, correct?
That's right.
Okay. So, under Marina Phase Three, under the column that is.
Cost for the Marina Phase Three is an estimated cost between four to five million.
Okay.
And that's, you know, split between, you know, the township and a variety of grants that we have been applying for in January.
Thank you for catching that, Doug.
Is that what it should read? I still question, is four million for part of it, and maybe the, the other portion is, I don't know. You tell me, is that where it's supposed to be?
I was thinking it was just describing the range, four million to five million.
Based on cost estimates provided by our engineers.
Is that what it is, is a range?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
Phase Three was originally supposed to just be phase three instead of phase three, A, B, and C, and costs have continued to go up, and that's part of the reason for the range.
And that, that is not a millage type thing, that's a.
That's correct.
That's currently in the marinas. Marina would pay for it itself. The rest of these are millage items, but that one is not, is that correct? They would be passed on to the taxpayer where that one would be passed on to the marina.
Marina double money.
Yeah. Okay.
Tenip again for grants.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to pass it on to the board. Is that the correct motion?
We have a motion to pass on to the Elmwood Township Board the, the pending Charter Township of Elmwood Capital Improvement Plan, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-nine.
Support.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried, and the capital improvement plan will be forwarded to the Elmwood Township Board. Thank you, Sarah. Excuse me. Item J. Sub B, Introduction of Site Plan Review, Special Use Permit, two thousand twenty-two hyphen zero six, Request by Welllevity LLC Regarding Property at South Timberly Drive one zero nine zero one and one zero eight zero zero, South Cottonwood Drive, and East Timberwood Parcels, one one three hyphen zero one four hyphen two six, parcel one one three hyphen zero one four hyphen one six, parcel one one three hyphen zero one four hyphen zero two nine, and parcel one one three zero four, is that, is zero one four or zero four? Zero one four, excuse me, hyphen five one for a resort. And we have a, a group representing the, the project, and if you have a, a spokesperson or spokespersons, please come to the podium and review your proposal.
Good evening. My name is Mark McKellar. I'm an attorney at Coon Rogers in Traverse City. My primary focus of practice is land use development. I'm the attorney for the project. This evening, we have the breadth of the project, essentially, we have the site development team and the, the proposed owner-operator as well. I just want to give you a quick overview, then I'll let the, Sarah take over, probably the presentation on the details, but we're all here tonight to answer any questions you have. We wanted to assemble everyone. These are kind of dynamic and fluid situations. The project, I'm actually pretty excited about it, I don't get projects quite this engaging. The breadth of the project, the scope of the project, the impacts being mitigated by the, the applicant, not every developer is open-minded to being so cognizant of the, the impacts it may or may not have. That is the most stunning view of any development project in northern Michigan I've ever seen. The property is extraordinary. I don't know if everyone's been there, but it's, it's stunning, and people ought to be able to use it and see it. The, the minimized impacts that they have included in the context of resort are substantial. The very first time I went up there, walking the edge of the property, you could hear the grouse drumming this late fall, and thinking about how that's not really going to change. Most of the woods, the canopy, that's, that's going to remain. The activities that are, engage people in the outdoors, the families, the generations will be able to use the property because of the facilities they're designed. You'll have multifamily, you could bring in the grandkids from out of state and the kids, and have people on-site with amenities as well that serve those that might be handicapped and serve those that might have a real desire to be outside or inside for wellness. It's a extraordinarily well-thought-out project. It's something that, that property, if it's going to be developed, this is a project deserving of that consideration. So with that, I'm going to let the people that really put the, the pens to the paper on design and the dimensional issues there, but if there's any questions about the, the ordinance or implications, our legal team's here as well to answer those. So I appreciate your consideration, and I'll let Sarah take over.
Thank you, Sarah Keever, GRO22. We did have a presentation that we could certainly bring up under the projector, but at this time, I think we'll just talk through the project, and like Mark said, we'll answer any questions you guys have. I too can honestly say that we're really excited about this project, and as you guys know, this has been a long time coming. I know that you have heard rumors of something that might be going on up at Timberly, and so we were here a couple months ago, and, and we sat and attended one of these meetings. So this has been a long time coming, but has been because we have gone through and worked with township staff, we have worked with our design team a lot to be able to put together a project that, again, is, is befitting to this parcel that is absolutely incredible. I can say that because being from this area is a very unique opportunity and something that will fit and just be, it, it fits in really well. What is Welllevity? So we have a rural resort zoned district. We all know where Timberly is, the Timberly Hill, and comprising of about a hundred acres, it's ninety-nine point nine nine acres, this is considered a resort, a wellness resort in the rural resort district, and comprised of different facets and buildings, amenities, structures, and reading from the narrative that we provided to you, I think this is the, the best way to describe what is Welllevity, and it's a wellness resort whose core components are health, wellness, and creating an environment of self-care and healing. And so what I'm going to describe to you is, you've seen all the, the considerable information that's in your packet, but describing the different buildings, different structures, and the different uses of this property are here to define that, is to define that health, wellness, and environment of self-healing and, and self-care and healing. Looking at your plan, I want to go through and, and hit some of the technical matters of, of the site itself. It's comprised of several different buildings, starting on the north end of the property, we call that the lodge. So that is a, is a structure that would be overlooking both Lake Michigan, Lake Meele Na, and then behind it would be the Grand Trevers Bay. That building itself, the main lodge, it contains twenty guest rooms. It operates as a hotel, motel, hotel, I should say. With that, as amenities to that hotel, it has a multi-use space, so a space that would be available for conferences, for meetings, and events. Right outside that multi-use space, overlooking to the north, overlooking both Lake Meele Na and Lake Michigan, would be an extension of that multi-use space, so in a, for lack of a better term, a multi-use garden, a multi-use lawn. And further north of that is also a pavilion. It's a small enclosed structure, but again, that's to be utilized for small entertaining, small gatherings that would be out there, and that's on the furthest north point on your plans. Included in that is an amenity and an accessory to the hotel is a restaurant. There would, of course, be the kitchen to serve both the multi-use space and the restaurant itself. In there is a retail market, a club room, even a greenhouse, and like I said, the pavilion that is showing outside that, outside that structure. So that comprises what the, the lodge is, what the main structure is. And so moving through, through the project, if we look to the west, we see the main parking lot, and the main parking lot is to serve just that, is to serve the guests of the, of the lodge, and immediately south of that is a small, smaller structure called the Kids' Club, and essentially a place for guests and even employees to be able to provide a place for them to have the children go and operate those same core components, whether it be recreation outdoors, whether it be learning different facets and taking classes, and definitely an entertaining place for children to operate, for children to go and participate in same, same activities that the adults experience, but yet on, on their level. Moving through the project, back over on the east side, so overlooking a little bit more of actually the Timberly Resort itself, the, the one that is still remain, that still remains, the, the snow tubing lodge, the snow tube hill, there are six cottages. So essentially, those would be a guest cottage for families, for multi-generational uses, for the ability to come, stay on the property, they would have, essentially, it would be set up like a single-family home, kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms. essentially it would be set up like a single-family home, kitchens, bedrooms, bathrooms, a living space, a place for community gathering, a place for visitors to come, rent that entire structure, and be able to spend time there. And it is important to note that these are all owned and operated by one entity, so these are not going to be condominiumized, they're not going to be broken out into ownership. This is all under one owner, and they will be operated as such. On the other side of the entrance, the drive coming in, you will see approximately, it's 14 cabins, 14 structures. And those, each one of those is comprised of either two-bedroom or three-bedroom lockoff units. So these again are like hotel rooms. You could rent out a one-bedroom, you could rent out the second bedroom. And so for a total of 34 keys or 34 hotel rooms. But in that, it is comprised of 14 cabins. Again, it's the same principle. The ability to come, stay on the property, use the amenities, visit the site, visit the area, and participate in all the activities and amenities that are taking place. Moving further south is the spa. And this spa contains an additional 10 guest rooms. So there is a lodging component in the spa. There are treatment rooms, consistent to what you would see in any spa. There is an indoor pool. There is a small cafe. And then there are additional amenities around the spa. So you see outdoor water features, you see additional pavilions. All those key components to help facilitate that spa and that wellness component that is emphasis on this property. Surrounding the property, you will notice that there is an additional pavilion, especially, I should say, specifically around the spa itself. There are pavilions and walking paths. Again, all to encourage health, wellness, to enjoy the outdoors and to enjoy this really incredible piece of property. These trails again are open to the guests, they're open to guests of Welllevity, those that would come in and access the trails, access the pavilions, be able to walk, be able to snowshoe, different activities that would be able to take place on this property. So with that, that goes through some of the very basics, the basics of what the components of the structures are onsite. And so looking at, I'm going to jump, just because I want to touch base on it, how this project is going to be served, and going into the technical side of it, but it's very essential, as we all know, water. And the site has already has an onsite well. And that same well will be utilized for this project. Between the there will be storage tanks that will be brought into the site, underground storage tanks. And between that well and the storage tanks, that will supply all water for this development. So it will also supply fire suppression to every single building on this property. And so even though that there's municipal water in this area, we know that there's not enough capacity, and there's no desire for us to want to try to upgrade or be a part of that system, we can supply 100% all water on this site. In addition, the same with sewer, onsite sewer. Going through the calculations, it'll be over 6,000 gallons a day. We will work with and have to apply through Eagle for groundwater discharge permit. With that, it is the state, Eagle goes through the permitting process with the applicant, and they have, once the groundwater discharge permit is issued, then that is monitored. That is something that they, the owner has to provide. And so that is a system that operates solely for Welllevity, but it is overseen by the state of Michigan. We did walk the site. We looked at stormwater. We walked the site with Lelandau County Soil Conservation, and they were actually really excited about the project, once they saw the little impact that we are doing to this property. Everybody thinks development, huge impact, create a lot of disturbance. And yet, looking at the site, looking at the plans, and looking all of the preservation and the opportunities, the lid technologies that are being used with this, it's extremely low impact. The provisions for stormwater is there, using different features, whether it be the rain gardens, whether it be some permeable surface. Low impact and stormwater design is thoroughly taken care of and was not a concern with the Conservation District. With that, it's good to, you know, come back to all those features, and we go through the technical side of it, we call, we go through the nitty-gritty, but just to remember that the component of wellness and recreation goes something that fits into this rural resort district. There are a lot of other uses that could go on this property. There's a lot of other things that can be done. But to be able to put this wellness resort, a focus on recreation, a focus of well-being, is a great opportunity. And again, it's something I can say. I'm very excited to see this go in. And the ability to, and you know, something that I've, when I worked with Georgina from day one, the words that we tend to use, and I speak for my other developers, we tend to try to maybe throw in some keywords like sustainability or environmentally friendly. And on this project, they aren't just token words. There is something there. It is truly a main focus of this project. The focus on being not only during construction, but operating sustainably. And the ability to use eco-friendly products and to operate as money vehicles onsite, they'll have shuttles to travel from maybe pick up people at the airport or whatever. Running those on electric, really low impact in the great scheme. And not only in the great scheme, but on this property, in a very low scale as well. So we were going to, you know, again, be able to say that we're excited to work on this project and a really great fit for this area. So with that, I will wrap it up, and we will answer any questions.
Thank you. It's a huge project. I mean, it looks really really intriguing. When you were talking about the the well and sewage treatment, and this is just kind of an off-the-wall question. I don't think it's based in an ordinance, but it's one I've been incubating since I was reviewing this. Was there any thought to gray water redistribution instead of just putting it into a sub-grade evaporation or distribution system?
There, absolutely. There was a discussion on that, and that is still being fleshed out. The final design for that. So looking at the system and how to reuse some of that is definitely taken into consideration. With that component, and I am not the engineer, so I cannot speak thoroughly to that matter, but to completely reuse the gray water distribution takes a lot of additional infrastructure. And it's something, so if you're going to say we are going to try to 100% be able to take care of, or even, you know, some 75%, whatever that number is, it is a considerable additional infrastructure that would have to impact the site. And so there has to be a fine balance. How much do you impact the site, and yet go ahead and do basically conventional drain field system?
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Sarah or the team?
Doug? On the planet, says 40,000 gallon underground water storage tanks. Does that clarify? Is that each tank is 40,000 or the total?
Total, yep. So estimated at this time, that would be sufficient to support the entire facility plus water, fire suppression.
Okay.
Sarah, you mentioned that you had the conservation. Did you meet with Steve Christensen on the site through the Soil Erosion Office?
Yes, and I'm going to call him the new guy, Callan.
Callan.
Yes. Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yep. The one other thing I forgot to bring up too, and I should touch base on this, is, you know, we always talk about, we want to know the impact of the site, and one of the questions is, is traffic? How is traffic going to impact the site? And so looking at that for ourselves in our operations, we preemptively engaged a traffic engineer. Maybe you guys have worked with him before. They're fishback out of Grand Rapids. And so in your packet is a trip generation analysis, and I'd be happy to go any of those details of that. They look at the uses of the entire facility. They look at how it would fit in or how it would impact all the streets in the area, and then they come up with a conclusion. Again, I can go into the technical if you need that. But I thought it was very, it wrapped it up. Their summary, their conclusion really wrapped up what it means, like what the impact would be for the site. And it says, "The order of magnitude for traffic volumes expected to be generated by the proposed resort use are consistent with the rural resort zoning and environment of the subject site." So their conclusion was that it was acceptable to this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to go into that as well.
Sarah, I just have a couple of questions too regarding just traffic. So back to the site, it is an enormous site plan, right? Is the spa and the fitness just going to be serviced only by the people that are staying in the hotel or the cabins, or is it going to be open to the public?
Good question. It is open to the public. So it'll be open to both the guests that would be staying overnight, but you could come and use it as a day spa as well.
Day spa?
Yes.
And that was considered when they were talking about the traffic?
Yes.
Because one could definitely be, it could be very different as a public versus the people staying on the property.
And so they, with that, they make, they err on the conservative assumption. So they err on the side that, yes, you would have
Open everybody.
Exactly. It was the same process. We worked in depth with Sarah, looking at the parking uses. It's the same thing. How do you handle multiple uses? How do you use people coming in from the days? And so the zoning ordinance actually has the ability to put in a factor for some of those shared uses and be able to calculate somewhat accurately how that site is going to be utilized for parking. It's the same principle.
So Sarah, with what you stated about traffic, basically you just stated that it's in line with the zoning district. But it didn't, that statement doesn't really address the roads getting there. It just says it works with the zoning district.
Their study actually takes into effect the whole road network getting there. And so when we go into, and if you read, that's why, so if we, I can go in, maybe I should go into the chart. They have three tables in their traffic study. And what that is doing is those tables are assigning those uses in conjunction with the additional traffic that's in that area. And so it is a broad picture of looking at the broad area. In fact, they even look at all the impacts that would have on Fauch, Mann, Timberwood, and Cottonwood Drives.
And so they assess the roads that are currently in that area and thought they were adequate?
They do. So they look at things like, they even pull out the accident reports, you know, looking, is there something, is there accidents that are happening on one of these roads, like something to say that site distance was going to be an issue? Or the grade of the road. Most of the accidents that happen on Fauch Road are deer-related, as we would well expect. Or slippery roads. But again, so those, they look at those components to see, is there a trouble area? Is there a spot that is a consideration or should be a consideration? Do we need to add a D cell lane on Mann Road or Fauch Road, or even up through Timberwoods and Cottonwoods?
Does it sounds like their reports are pretty much all encompassing. Does it take into effect the truck traffic to to construct this at top of the hill and what that will do for the roads?
So a trip generation does not take into consideration a short-term construction traffic? Would you, yeah, please.
Any development on that property require trucks to travel? It's a private road system. So the problem is, there's no forcing mechanism in place unless under contract to develop those types of improvements. Those are private, you know, private things. So if it was a single-family homes being developed up there, there could be about 38 or 40 of those. You could have a childcare center as well, which, you know, if you developed out this property, there'd be, with a childcare center and housing, the traffic generation would be more than double than proposed, which are uses by right. So there's no way to really address that issue except for among the private parties that are subject to the restrictions and contractual obligations of the roads. So that's kind of the, it's a tough thing because it's not a public road. Those are, you know, private relationships, which this development is subject to all those types of relationships. However, I would say that the intent is certainly not to impact the roads any more than any other type of development would, or any of the development in the back of the the properties now where there's, if you go straight back and don't turn right up to this property, there's housing going in back there, and when they drive trucks back there for cement, for, you know, the poured walls, the trussing and stuff like that, you're going to have that type of traffic. Although, you know, this is a 100-acre parcel, so it would, again, as an impact, it's not any different than I can imagine any other type of development. So I don't know how to address the specific issue of, I think what you're getting to, Jeff, is that, you know, how do you address road conditions or deterioration as a result of building? And that's among the private owners of the road to to work out, I guess is the best way I can describe it. So if there's, you know, crushes of shoulder and things like that, well, that's a discussion that Welllevity has to have with the neighbors, and neighbors have to have with them and figure out how to do that. Certainly, you know, we're not going to be asking for people to operate illegally and out of, you know, during frost laws and things like that. But the development of the property should not be so significant to be any, really frankly, any different than residential in terms of the type of traffic and construction impact.
Thank you.
Rick, if I may?
Yes.
Sarah, just another question. Just, I'd like to just get a sense of, like, yes, that's such a grand scale. What's your timeline look like? If you were to go through and do this?
Yes, from the date of construction, which we would anticipate being sometime next summer, approximately two years. Which I hesitate to say that anymore because materials, labor and all that do not hold that to me, help me to that, but I think that's a reasonable assumption. And it would be all one phase, you know, as long as
Yeah, it's like an ASK multi-phase or single-phase.
You know, as much as construction sequencing allows, this means, it still means it's all one phase. And so to come onsite and to get the lodge going is simultaneously getting the single-family residences going, and when the lodge is probably, you know, when the foundations are poured, then they're going to move down to the spa and do that. So as much as construction sequencing allows, but yes, it would be one phase.
Do the vehicles stay onsite over the construction vehicles?
During construction?
Yep.
To some extent, some will, but just like any construction site, some come and go as needed. And some end up staying onsite. So it's per contractor. Something that they, yeah, as needed. Jeff can probably answer that one better than I.
The tools would probably stay on the site. The vehicles would come and go.
Yes. Yes.
I think it's an exciting project. I think it's very grand scale, and I think it's appropriate. Its use for the top of the hill is exciting. I just, I know the roads well. And I'm concerned about that end of it. And just because somebody has put a statement and said that the roads will be fine, I'm pretty sure the roads won't be fine. They're falling apart already. So, and I don't know how long they've been there, a dozen years, maybe fourteen years since it's been paved. It used to all be dirt roads in there for years. And finally, we put a special assessment district together and got them paved. And there's some of them that are in pretty tough shape already. So, or sections of them there go through some heavy clay soils and stuff. And so, and I express my interest in it only because I've seen, I've seen that hillside wash down the existing road. I've seen, I've seen it wash mounds and, mounds and, mounds of dirt down that road. And I'm sure, you know, it's gonna be improved, and they're gonna put in drainways. And I'm sure it's gonna be better. But the existing roads are inadequate already, in my opinion. It's, you know, it's like trying to send a semi down a dirt trail. It's not gonna work, in my opinion.
Those roads that you're describing, are those the roads that lead into the private portions?
They are, they are the private roads.
They are the private roads.
Yeah. And really, it's, you know, it's something that there should be a surety bond, or something to protect the homeowners that are there, because the roads are already falling apart, and they're not very wide. They're twenty feet, I think. I think they're twenty feet wide, maybe. It might be smaller, it might be twenty feet with the curb on them. It's, they're pretty precarious.
Sounds like there's gonna be a lot of discussion between the private parties for kind of what's acceptable and what's shared responsibility, or maybe, maybe the attorney can shed a little light on surety-type things or-
Yeah, John, I appreciate it. And Jeff, I get where, I understand the issue at play. The problem is, from a land use perspective, we're entitled to the easement access and the use of the property despite whatever the relationship, if it's greatly defined in terms of joint maintenance obligations, or if it's completely loose. That's unfortunately, the way that most of these obligations were created, lack the obligations anymore. As you develop a development like Timberlea's, the housing today, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be allowed to do without a very, you know, robust joint maintenance agreement that, you know, delineates the obligations of each party. But it's a private issue. I mean, the, if the neighbors have, you know, there's wear and tear, and they feel that it's attributed to well-evity, they're entitled to it. But well-evity is also entitled to access any other wear and tear by anyone else or any other developer, and those lots also can be sought for contribution to well-evity. It's a shared use, so it's difficult to work through in this context because it's a permitted access point. It's a permitted road, and it's really a private relationship. So John, I think you're right that that's it. We're not acknowledging it, or not avoiding the acknowledgement of that issue, but that, it really is those issues. And I think the study, Jeff, I wanna make a clarification. I think you said that, it says that the roads will be okay. I think that what it says is that the traffic, the impact on, the traffic impact in terms of, you know, nuisance or the density, or the number of impactful trips is not inconsistent or congruent with the neighborhood. The roads, I mean, let's all be honest, you said it, some of those roads are in, they're in rough shape, but they're not in rough shape because of well-evity. They're in rough shape because that's how they've been managed. If they're in rougher shape because of well-evity, that's a private issue that needs to be fleshed out among the owners. So, I don't wanna belabor the point that it's really a kind of an other issue, but in a way it is. I have no doubt that well-evity will do the right thing. They have an obligation under the law to contribute whatever portion that's attenuated to their, has been attenuated by their use. And the private owners are certainly, you know, permitted to execute on those issues. But it is a, it is a deeded and provided access. So, I don't know, I don't know how to address, I don't know how to address that in a public land use thing. I'm just, I'm not trying to avoid, I just don't really know how. It just is what it is, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's clear that the owners are entitled to go to and from their property using that system because there's an easement in place, correct?
That's correct.
And I think it was just more a general concern, wear and tear is gonna have, you know, the increased construction traffic is gonna have, may or may not have-
Clearly.
-an effect on the road, but it, it sounds like you stated that the well-evity is willing to discuss that if it becomes a problem with the people that have an interest in the roads and the-
Absolutely. They're an obligated party, no doubt. And they have to come to the table when the time arises. And there's no question that construction will wear and tear the roads. I just don't know if it'll wear and tear any more than any other type of construction out there that's proposed.
Yeah, if I may. I wasn't saying that they didn't, they didn't have access. There's no question they had easement to their property. I wasn't stating that.
Oh, no, and I'm not suggesting you did, no.
That's kind of what you stated earlier. I'm saying the roads were built for residential traffic, not necessarily commercial venture.
So, that's true, but the easement is scoped for the use of the rural resort. So the fact that they built it residential is not necessarily well-evity's problem. So, I would advise anyone to look at the eighty-five-page legal documents related to the easements and look at that. There is no restriction on the type of use, and in fact, when the easements were granted, they were granted by the banks that owned the resorts and the resort lands. And it's permitted for those uses, it's zoned for those uses, the easement carries with that those uses. So, the fact that they built it to residential standards is not, does not restrict well-evity's use of the road. What it does is it requires them to contribute their fair share to the maintenance upgrades, improvements as they go forward.
Do you know when that easement agreement was put in place?
Uh, it was in the eighties.
Oh, pretty sure, that recent?
I'm pretty confident. We've provided a copy of the entire package of title work related to that, to the township and their attorney. It was, it was not a drafted easement between two parties. It was out of a settlement, in a lawsuit, between several banks that own the lands that were going into bankruptcy and foreclosure. And it was cross-easements provided to each other for access. So there's portions of it that are residential, but that's not, that's not, it's not restricted to residential use.
The good thing is, at least like, I'm sure there'll be some agreement that, you know, it's not obviously any well-evity's interest to have poorly-conditioned roads develop such huge projects, so hopefully they can come in some terms that-
Are there any other questions for well-evity? Thank you. So our next step is to schedule a public hearing?
The planning commission will be, the application is complete. You know, they can consider scheduling a public hearing. So, you know, that said, in my staff report, you'll see, you know, I list all of the requirements for site plans, you know, approval, and then especially permit. I mean, everything that's, you know, covered in the text is, you know, from me. Overall, again, you know, I do think that the basic requirements of the application as set forth by our zoning ordinance, you know, have been provided. And due to the size of this project, I tried to do a little bit, you know, more homework than I usually do, because it's such a large plan set. So I did indicate what sheet had, you know, the required information on it. I don't believe we need to go through them, you know, itemized. You know, this was included in the packet. I'm just doing a final scan myself, but again.
Just quickly, on the creeks that were identified at one time, those are just sort of like Phantom Creeks now, or hundred-year rainstorm runoffs?
That was briefly addressed in the report that was provided.
Right, from the, in the initial-
Yeah. I mean, I had only flagged it just because there's a national flood hazard layer, and wetlands layer. And there were a couple of, you know, there were, you know, two streams and, you know, wetlands on site. You know, not all of it had been included on the site plan. So they did actually have somebody in a private firm go out and investigate. They did provide pictures of the one Phantom Creek, if you will. It is clearly not a creek.
So Rick, if I may, just a question to Sarah. So it looks like just the only, everything's provided in the packet except for six and thirty-five, correct? Something related to pools and-
Yes, and that has actually just been resolved since I, you know, drafted this report. Because again, we got some additional information after I had done my report.
Yeah.
In six. Oh, yeah, the seal of the registered engineer.
Pretty simple.
So that's on page two of the, yeah, that can always be a conditional approval.
Okay. So with very few exceptions, the application is complete.
Just to emphasize, just because the application is complete does not mean that the commission would be making any findings of fact on if the standards have been met. That would be done at a public hearing.
At the public hearing, correct.
Sarah, if I may?
Yes.
I have a question for Sarah. Sarah, typically, the larger projects, we are usually close to our sewer system. And this one has, they've stated that they're gonna meet DEQ requirements or whatever. But should that be part of the application, that DEQ application, or something returned from the DEQ that they have decent enough area to accommodate that water?
So historically speaking, the planning commission has granted, you know, conditional approval. In this case, because it's such a large project, the commission actually might want to, you know, before rendering any decision on this project, have comment letters from all of the, you know, agencies required. Now, you know, a comment letter wouldn't necessarily be a permit. It would just be, we've received this plan, we understand, you know, I mean. Because generally speaking, some of these permits can't even be applied for until they obtain local approval. So just making sure that, again, you know, they did receive the plans, they're reviewing them. And I would note that our ordinance does allow for any, for it to be considered, again, if this is approved. If there are any changes that need to be made in order to, you know, meet DEQ's requirements, if, that would be deemed a minor amendment and could be done without having to come back to the planning commission. But again, I would encourage, you know, the commission to get letters, which I believe they've all been submitted, like the plans have been submitted to the other agencies. It's just actually getting evidence of that.
Yeah.
Which could be readily applied, provided.
It's a huge amount of water.
Mark, did you have a moment to make a comment?
Just very technical, on that very issue, EGLE won't even review a plan until it's actually been approved as a design. So we, they won't even comment on it.
Right.
And it'll take about six months to get a comment back. It's taking about eighteen to twenty-four months to get a permit right now. So, on water and sewer, well, I guess with well and sewer, those things, they need a, they need a design that's been approved. So let's just say you guys decided to change something, or we worked out something and you wanted less cabins or whatever, we'd have to redesign the whole plan and re-submit it. And they're not, they're not really candid. So that's why they require an approved plan, and then we can't even get a land use permit from Sarah until we actually submit a finalized permit from EGLE. So on those particular two items, that's the process in place now. There's just fewer reviewers.
Right. So in the event that, during the Eagle review, they found that there was a slight deficiency that, you know, you would be willing to correct that in order to fulfill their review and get the final letter?
Absolutely. And that's why you have the finer, major, master document after. We can't do anything, we have to, we can do it until all those things are done and certified.
Understood.
So, with that all said, have you had an engineer look at this then? And they feel pretty confident that they can manage that water? Okay.
There's actually two different engineers.
Okay.
There's an infiltration test, they've been doing it per test, and using previous historical records on the property as well. So luckily, there's a lot of data to be able to support the design and we're getting ready to.
All right, thank you. That's just information.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, the chair will entertain a motion to proceed to a public hearing at the next regularly-scheduled planning commission meeting?
I make the motion to schedule a public hearing on S U S B R twenty-two dash zero seven.
Well, I was just going to say, do we wanna talk about, I mean, I know we said regular scheduled, regularly scheduled meetings. Excuse me while I trip over my words. That would be December thirteenth, and it's my understanding that our chair is not going to be present at that time, is that correct?
That is correct. Due to some awkward calendar skills on my part, I schedule myself to be far away at that time. Yeah, Mark?
We, I think, we'd actually just use the scope of it and have a full board. We'd be willing to pay the fee and have a special meeting on this particular issue. And here is convenience in December, if that works better. I hate to belabor another-
Understood.
If I may, what about the possibility of just changing the meeting day? Either before or after?
Well, that's actually what I was going to kind of note, because our regular meeting is also, has a very heavy agenda. So if we did wanna have a meeting, we could have the December thirteenth meeting. And we could also, if the planning commission would be around and available December twentieth. So that, you know, would have been our regularly-scheduled meeting. We didn't have it because we didn't wanna have it so close to the holidays. It's entirely up to you if you wanna reconsider that. I just wanted to flag it for you.
And Fitz, I will be back before the twentieth.
You won't?
I will, I will, I'll get back the nineteenth.
Okay. So we'd have our regular meeting on the thirteenth, and then this one on-
A special-
Twentieth?
If that works for the question.
Yeah, we would have to.
Because at both dates, we have the requirements of the opening act and the requirement of this.
Okay, so-
We could not have it earlier.
Okay. So we have a motion without support at this point. If the commissioner offering that motion wanted to adjust it to reflect the special, the hearing, the public hearing at a special meeting.
On the twentieth.
On the twentieth.
And we're just doing this-
It would-
Just before the well-evity on the twen-
It would be before the public hearing of well-evity.
So I would correct my motion to reflect the date of the December- So I would correct my motion to reflect the date of the December twentieth at seven.
We have a motion on the floor to, um, schedule a public hearing at a special meeting on December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two for the, um, well levity, um, project.
I'll second that.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, uh, motion carried. We will, um, the motion reflects that we will be convening a, uh, public hearing for the well levity project on, uh, December twentieth.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing this project with us. It, it's pretty impressive, uh, just the scope of it. It would be nice. Thank you. Is that yours?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I have successfully buried my agenda on my desk. Oh, I found it, thank you. Just, yeah, never fails, that happens to me at home all the time. Okay, moving on to, um, J sub C introduction, zoning ordinance two zero one seven hyphen zero four hyphen one eight. A zoning ordinance amendment to amend section five point seven accessory buildings. Amend section two point two definitions. Amend section three point five, three point one two, and three point one three. To clarify language regarding dwellings, amend section five point six table of dimensional requirements and its footnotes. Amend section six point five lighting. Okay, Sarah, would you like to lead, lead off with, um, what we're proposing here?
Uh, sure. So generally speaking, the text has not changed since our last meeting. Um, I mean, you know, modifications that I'm proposing are indicated in red text. Um, so I use the option of track changes in the word, in Word. Um, you know, so there's a few different, you know, proposals to change the zoning ordinance. Um, I'm happy to, you know, itemize them, um, but I did that last time. So essentially, you know, it would be, um, amending, you know, definitions to include a definition for frontage, further clarify a definition, further clarify, you know, section, you know, three. Um, you know, new text that you haven't seen is indicated in red italicized text. And again, there really isn't. The only new text was included for section six, the changes for the lighting section. Where, again, I did include what the commission had suggested of, um, the illumination and adding an exemption if you're illuminating, you know, the state flag or, you know, or, um, the US flag. And, you know, there's any light less than seventy watts. So sixty is your, sixty watts is your traditional, like, indoor bulb. So going up, you know, ten watts for an exterior that, you know, I feel would be sufficient for an exemption for residential lights. So, um, I did catch one typo that was pointed out by Mr. Roberts that I will, I will amend. Um, and so I said with regards to a lot, um, when I'm talking about section two point two and definitions. So that'll be changed to be proper grammar, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions on this. On what would be page two of the four, section three point one three dwellings. You are going to, um, put that under three point one three. I'm wondering why not amend, um, section two point two, the definition of dwellings, to add that text?
That would be quite a lot of text to have in a definition. Um, I mean, we could look at, you know, again, changing the definition of dwelling unit. But I wouldn't propose it at this time. Um, sorry, I'm just scrolling, scrolling through. So dwelling unit is a group of rooms located within a building and forming a single habitable unit, having facilities which are used or intended to be used for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating purposes. So, I mean, again, that definition, I do feel is pretty defined. Um, it does specify that it's within a building. Um, so that automatically would, you know, exclude, you know, living in a tent, living in a camper, because none of those are buildings. However, um, I do think it would be helpful to include it in section three when you're specifically talking about dwellings, just because we do get a lot of calls asking for clarification.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking for a clarification.
Right, yeah.
And you're getting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I have another one.
Go ahead, Chair.
Section five point seven accessory buildings, um, you have it as B one. I think it becomes B three, if I'm not mistaken. That was page three out of four.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the proposed changes, um.
Doug, what do you, can you clarify that? What do you, you question what under five point seven?
So we're looking in our zoning, actual zoning ordinance, not the proposed changes. And, um, so it's on page five dash eleven of the zoning ordinance itself. It talks about accessory buildings in the text. So I do see what you mean. Um, it should be A, um, accessory buildings, it should be A. Is that what you mean?
It should be A, it should be A three. Correct.
Yes, it should be A, and then it should be three, and then you have five. So I can make that modification. I'm understanding that now. Thank you for requesting further clarification.
While you're holding the, your copy of the zoning ordinance, section six point five point three, in the proposal, um, in the, in the exceptions, um, number I references three point one eight point two, C and D. And I don't seem to have in my copy three point one eight point two.
Section, Doug, if you could, six five three, is that what you're thinking?
And on page four of four, um, on the section six five, six point five point three, references back under I, Jeff, references back to three point one eight point two. And I don't seem to have a three eight point one eight point two. I don't either.
And so, right, right.
I can correct the reference.
Okay.
Sections, yeah, because that, it should be, it should read, um, section six point five point two, C and D. Because that's, so, um, those are requirements. So there shall be no lighting of a blinking, flashing, or fluttering nature, including changes in light and intensity brightness. And D is no light shall be used in any location or in any manner so as to be construed, confused or with or construed as a traffic control device.
What was that? It's I that is, it's, um, Sarah, it's I that is the issue.
Yep.
And the reference in I is to three point one eight point two. And I, I cannot find a three point one eight point two.
Right, and I'm saying what that should reference. And so I'm saying it should reference not section three point eighteen point two point C. It should reference section six point five point two, C and D.
Oh, okay.
Which I just read aloud. So I'll, I'll correct, you know, that text to be, you know, section six point five point two, C and D.
Any other?
Do you see that in the zoning ordinance?
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns about the proposed changes?
I like them.
Then, uh, if there are no further, uh, questions or, uh, discussion, we will need a motion to, uh, go to public hearing?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Let's go over three point one three again, dwellings. And unless allowed under any other app. I'm trying to, if somebody's staying in a camper, that's not considered a dwelling. But they can stay in a camper. It's just, it's not considered a dwelling. Is that, is that what that says?
You can't use it as a dwelling.
Correct.
So you can have a camper on your property, you can store it, you know, it's, you know, accessory. However, you can't all of a sudden have Cousin Joe come and stay in there for like three weeks and use it as a dwelling.
Got it.
But in the event that you had an agricultural worker coming from Texas with a fifth wheel.
Exactly. Or if there is, you know, by an active God and you need a temporary, you know, living situation, that, that is referenced in our zoning ordinance. There are a few situations where it could be permitted, but overall, it's not.
I, I was thinking more about the tents. I, I know somebody puts up a tent and friends come and stay in the tent for a week or so. And you can't do that, or you can't do that, or?
Can't use it as a dwelling.
Okay, so then that goes back to the definition of a dwelling. They're, they're living there for a week, but they're also using the house. So they could come stay in their house for a week, but they couldn't stay in a tent. I'm just, I'm splitting hairs.
Our, yeah, our ordinance doesn't specify time length. Um, I mean, it's, it's very possible, you know, if we get a call and somebody is camping on a property and they've been there for a week. It's, if I were to get that call, I would deem it as if they're using that tent as a dwelling, they're in violation of the zoning ordinance.
I guess that's my whole point, is, is back to the definition and the things. Is our, is our definition of dwelling secure enough to make this work?
Our definition of dwelling is a dwelling unit. Dwelling is any structure which a tent, you know, from, yeah. Um, or portion thereof which is designed for, or used exclusively for residential purposes containing one or more dwelling units. So, yeah, it's not a structure, but you can't use it as a dwelling. You can, it should read maybe dwelling unit, but yes, okay, I read, I see your point.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't always explain myself real well, but just something to look at.
No, I think you were, it just took me a while to get.
Any other concerns about the proposed text?
I have a quick question and a word. Um, section three point five, you're page two of four, where it says amend, amend section three point five. It's in, it would now re, if we accept it, reads, "In any zoning district, no more than one dwelling shall be permitted per," and that says residential lot or parcel. Uh, since it's any zoning district, do we really need the word, should we really have the word residential there? Or should it be any lot or parcel? Does, is the qualifier appropriate or not?
We could also eliminate the second reference to residential.
Okay, okay.
Well, but we do allow duplexes on one lot.
Pardon?
We do allow duplexes on one lot.
Oh, that's fine. I mean.
Right, but it does go on to say unless two or multiple family dwellings are specifically permitted.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, yep. So we're going to scra, scratch the word residential?
Correct.
Residential lot or parcel.
Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
Could the commission be comfortable with changing section three point three dwellings? Um, so uses, can't use, um, tent, camper, RV, or similar shall not be used. Instead of saying as a dwelling, like a dwelling? Like a dwelling unit?
Yeah.
Because that would resolve that.
Yeah.
What both Doug and Jeff referenced.
So what are we changing?
Say it again, please.
So section three point three, three point one three dwelling. So unless, um, allowed under any other applicable provisions, provisions of this ordinance, a tent, camper, RV, or similar shall not be used like a dwelling. And doing so shall be deemed a violation of this ordinance.
Okay.
Used as or like.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because that would still let, you know, if you're having a family reunion and you put a, oh, a tent up in the backyard for the kids. I don't think everybody's going to complain about that. It's just when people start putting flower boxes on their tents that.
After those flower boxes.
Why is more permanence like that?
Yeah, the, yeah, the rope lights along the ridge, yeah, okay. I didn't mean to, you know, get us off, off task there, but, um, so the next step is a public hearing?
With the changes as discussed.
With the changes as discussed.
Do we have a motion?
Not yet.
I'll make that.
We have a motion to proceed to public hearing, um, ZO two zero one seven hyphen zero four hyphen one eight, uh, which is the, um, text, uh, corrections, uh, in the, the sections that we read, uh, earlier. Section two point two, three point five, three point one two, three one three. Amend section five point six, section five point seven, and six point five.
Second that.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. And, oh, that will be at the next regularly scheduled meeting?
It will be December thirtieth.
Yes. All right. Okay, moving on to item D, meeting schedule review. We're getting to that time of year where we have to notify the public of what we'll be doing next year. It's hard to believe next year is so close.
I like the recommendation of moving the two meetings in November and December to the twelfth. And with that stated, I'd make a motion that we approve the meeting schedule with those two dates.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the, uh, uh, meeting schedule notice to the public for, uh, twenty twenty-three, um, with the changes of the November meeting being November fourteenth, and the December meeting being December twelfth.
Support.
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Uh, then the meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three is approved. Aye. Opposed. Then the meeting schedule for 2023 is approved. Item K, discussion on zoning ordinance. If there are any ordinances that are standing out to anyone we think need a little more work or we need clarification on.
One item. So in our zoning ordinance, this was actually discussed briefly at the Township Board level earlier this week. Our zoning ordinance in section three does allow for temporary slash seasonal uses in structures. So that's on page 3-7 of your zoning ordinance. And we're looking at the very bottom of that page where it talks about in the neighborhood commercial, shoreline commercial, and general commercial zoning districts, temporary special events and sales, including but not limited to activities such as community picnics, circuses, carnivals, parades, street fairs, Christmas tree sales. It just goes on. The Township Board would be interested in also adding the municipal center to, you know, those districts that would allow for those types of events. So if, you know, the Commission also agrees with that, I can, you know, prepare that text and have it come out before, you know. And this would also kind of keep in mind that, you know, those events, you know, would have to, you know, be imposed by the zoning administrator. They would be temporary. They can only occur if a handful, quite, actually quite a few items have been submitted, including, you know, approval from the property owner. So essentially, what that would look like for the municipal center is they would first have to come to the Township Board for approval. Township Board would have to okay it. And then they could, you know, or deny it.
So if the Little League group wanted to have a Christmas wreath sale, they could set up their vending on the bald diamond?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
And they could do so in conformance with our zoning ordinance, which would be great.
It, it seems like a reasonable addition. So you can have something drafted for our initial review on the 13th. Thank you. Anything else on item K? Item L? Well, my thanks everyone for being so well prepared. And thank you in advance to Vice Chair Jeff April for filling in for me at our next meeting. I, you know, I just made a goof in my calendar. So thank you very much. And I, I have, I'm just very fortunate to be working with such a knowledgeable and thorough group of people on these pieces of information that we have to kind of take apart and put back together again. Thank you very much. And I'd like to wish everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Comments from Planning Commissioners? Hearing comments from staff?
Thank you guys for your patience, continued patience. I also just want to kind of give you a couple of updates on applications that we've received. So, you know, items that will also be on your December 13th meeting. We received a application for site plan review and special use permit for an agricultural, commercial farm, agricultural, commercial enterprise, which would be a farm market in what is commonly referenced as the old school house on Lakeview Hills Road. That's first going to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for variance though. So, you know, that's just something to be aware of. We've also received a request for a text amendment that I've, you know, touched briefly on that will likely come for introduction at your December 13th meeting. And we also received a site plan review application for parking area, the De Young natural, um, De Young natural area on the De Young owned portion. Because it's a partnership park. A portion of it is owned by the township and maintained by De Young. By, by the conservancy, I should say. So it's on the conservancy portion. That's all. We've been busy. So I appreciate you and all of the hard work that you do. It's not, never said enough.
Thank you. We're at the second portion of public comment. I'll open public comment at 8:34. If you wish to make a public comment, please come to the podium and do so. And we ask that these comments be limited to two minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment at 8:35 PM. And we are at item P at adjournment.
You got a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Support?
We have support. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. We are adjourned at 8:35 PM. Thank you.